Financial. Twenty twenty two financial plan presentation to the public today. Tonight is, Anthony will go through the plan and then after he is done. You may feel free to ask questions of administration as council, mayor, council will do our debating at council. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So tonight's presentation is the twenty twenty two financial plan that councils put together. Just an overview of how the presentation is going to work tonight. The first part of the presentation will be reviewing the budget highlights. The second part is a mill rate comparison and fi- finally a tax result comparison. Can everyone see me fine as I'm fine if I'm here sitting? Yeah, okay. So um just to bring it to everyone's attention, under the municipal act state that all financial plans must include a balanced budget. That means all the revenues taken in must balance the revenues that are going or the expenses that are going up. So what to expect in twenty twenty two? From the cities portion, you'll see a municipal property tax freeze. The mill rate would be twenty six point one five, which is what it was last year. So that's a zero percent tax increase from the city. The business tax rate will remain the same at three point nine nine percent. And the special levy for the water renewals or water repairs will be eighty three dollars and seventy five cents per loan. So how did council get to zero for twenty twenty two? Council made a withdrawal from the general reserve. I'm not going to use estimated numbers, the actuals are up on the screen of two hundred fifty five thousand to fund the operating expenses. There's also increased revenues in the financial plan based on the previous year's trends. And council worked to decrease expenses. So some of the budget highlights for this year, council in twenty nineteen applied for road projects under a grant called the Investment in Canada. Infrastructure program. The projects were approved in twenty twenty one with funding from all levels of government, so the provincial, federal and Thompson. Each dollar of investment by the city of Thompson brings in five dollars of grants. To the city towards these projects. The overall project size is forty million dollars over the five years. And the city's portion is six point six eight six million. For twenty twenty two, the road project. The twenty twenty two road project is five million dollars with the city share this year being eight hundred and thirty three thousand dollars towards that project. City council has allocated a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars of taxes towards the city's portion for this year. And the rest of it is being funded through the reserve allocations. So that's basically council savings. The next big capital project on the go is the aquatic facility or the new pool. It's currently being designed by StatTech and the current class B estimate is twenty four point seven million. Eleven million of funding is through grant funding recently announced by the government of Canada and the government of Manitoba. Council has put away one point six million dollars of reserves since the previous pool closed down. And valet has contributed two million dollars towards this project. That leaves a gap of nine point two million for the estimates. Council is anticipating that fundraising will reduce the amount of borrowing that is required. Council also has an annual pool budget that comes through every year, four hundred forty nine thousand dollars. That is also being allocated towards the project moving forward so that the cost of the final pool can be reduced. So some other highlights for revenues, council has frozen the fees and fines at the twenty twenty one level. So there'll be no, no increases to fees and fines in the city at this time. The provincial per capita grants, currently we've been told will be decreasing for the city of Thompson. Because of the reduction in the census count. So we went from about thirteen and a half thousand. Statistics Canada says that Thompson's around thirteen thousand. Council has given the administration direction to challenge the census numbers and try to bring those numbers back up to where we believe they actually are. Council received a one-time grant from the province of Manitoba for the pothole fund. I think it was called in the news that Thompson's country or what we received them in the province was a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. And then the main capital grants that you'll see this year were the ISIP funding, investing in Canada infrastructure project. So the money towards the roads, this year's money towards the water mains and sewer renewals and the money towards the pool that I discussed. Council also recently received a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the government account or the government of Manitoba. For the building sustainable communities program, which will be used revitalizing Juniper Park. So what, because you'll see here, this is the council's revenues for the year. It's much higher than most other years because of the number of grants the council received. So it's at fifty five, almost fifty five point nine million dollars for the year. Casper, could you just pop that over a bit so I can see the numbers? So you'll see that federal and provincial grants have contributed thirty six per- thirty six percent of the city's revenues for the year. Taxes twenty percent, transfers eighteen percent, sales of goods and services by the city. Nine percent, the grants and lieu that we received from valet and from other government agencies, eight percent. Other revenue, six percent, license permits and fines, one percent, penalties, one percent. And then rentals, taxes added, and those are less than one percent. So you can see the breakdown on how the revenues come in for operating the city. Two point six million is coming into basket funding. That's the funding from the government account or from the government of Manitoba. That might be affected depending on what the final census numbers. The firefighter grants are three hundred and twenty eight thousand. The liquor commission's grant for the CSO is a fifty five thousand. An arts programming grant of nine thousand two hundred. The road maintenance grant I previously mentioned of a hundred and fifty four and the ambulance grant of a hundred and ninety eight. A hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars roughly, giving us a total operating grants of three point three million dollars. On the capital side, the investing in Canada grants, fifteen million dollars. The community, Canada Community Building Fund, that's what we formerly called the gas tax, it now has a new name, seven hundred and thirty six thousand. Additional basket funding, it used to be called the roads and bridges, it's now can be allocated however council wants, two hundred and forty six thousand. The building sustainable communities program grant three hundred thousand and the twenty twenty one fire surveillance grant a hundred thousand. Adding up to sixteen point five million dollars in grants for the city this year. So breakdown of what the transfers are at eighteen percent, there's a transfer from the general reserve to reduce taxes to twenty twenty one loans. Transfer from reserves to fund capital projects. Council transfer from nominal surplus to fund the fire truck. Originally council was gonna take debentures or loans to pay part of the fire truck. Council has now paid the whole fire truck off with what they already have in service. Transfer some reserve for operating initiatives such as the election, affordable housing initiatives and tourism initiatives. And then the accommodation tax at five hundred thousand a year. This is an overview of the reserves excluding the utility. So for the twenty twenty one reserve balance seventeen point five million roughly. The revenues that were transferred to the reserves, three point nine million and allocations from the reserves of nine point eight million. There's a net impact of the twenty twenty two of minus five point nine million. So the ending balance on the reserves is eleven million five, eleven point five million dollars. The city's required to keep a minimum balance in reserves. So there's six point four million in the general reserve, that's required by the municipal act, and there's one point seven in the landfill closure reserve. Sales of goods and services at nine percent. This city got two point nine million or gonna be getting two point nine million roughly in revenue. Garbage pickup and landfill fees, one point two six million, custom work and transit, a hundred and fifty thousand. Recreation revenues about five hundred and eighty thousand from the TRCC, the arenas, fitness area and outdoor recreation areas. Licenses, permits and fines, that includes about forty eight thousand a year in business licenses. It's about two hundred and fifty licenses a year. Thirteen thousand and a half, thirteen and a half thousand animal licenses. Two hundred and twenty eight thousand for building inspections and plumbing permits, et cetera. And a hundred and thirty three thousand in bylaw enforcement and traffic fines. There's also a few other small licenses and taxi transfers that are included in that amount. Taxes added, penalties and rentals, taxes added, expecting a hundred thousand this year. That results from changes in assessments throughout the year. So someone changes their building, makes an improvement and is reassessed. There's usually an increase in the assessment. Penalties, five hundred and three thousand. The amount that is charged on penalties is one point two five percent of its compound. And then an additional two hundred thousand budgeted to fund ICIP, the best thing in Canada infrastructure projects. Rentals, the city receives rent from the government of Canada through the RCMP. For the rural component that rents one of the floors of that building. And they pay their proportional share of the building's costs. So this just gives you, I won't go to the numbers, but just the breakdown of where your taxes are going. See roughly half, just a little bit more is through the municipal side than the other half is through the school district and educational side. The accommodation tax, the city usually sees a revenue of about half a million dollars a year through the hotel taxes. This year council has decided to allocate that half a million dollars, eighty percent towards infrastructure reserves. Ten percent towards the public safety and ten percent to economic development. So now I'm gonna jump over to the expense side. So two hundred and fifty five thousand roughly is allocated from the general reserve to keep the mill rate the same at zero. RCMP budget has increased this year by two hundred and fifty five thousand. Fire truck debenture was removed, so fifty eight thousand, handy van contractors removed, forty seven thousand. And keeping in mind that since twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, council had already reduced expenses by one point nine million dollars. And those productions continue into twenty twenty two. Expense increases due transfer from reserves, there's no tax impact for this. There's demolitions of the trailers that the city has acquired through the tax sale process. So these are properties that have been abandoned through the tax sale process. The city now has to demolish them because they're unsafe. Council's allocated eighty thousand dollars towards that. The three Polaris buildings that the city was gifted from the province, those have expenses to maintain them. Council has allocated a hundred thousand towards those until those buildings can be sold or given to a different organization. And drainage projects, there's been a number of complaints about drainage issues around the city. Council's allocated a hundred thousand dollars towards addressing some of those issues. Council reallocated a number of COVID expenditures that have been made in the past. They removed the snowbirds funding as the snowbirds said they could no longer come to Thompson. So those funds have come back to the city. They've removed the funding for crime prevention through environmental design. As the RCMP indicated, they can train their own members on that in Winnipeg and provide that service to us through their own facilities. As street sweeping funding has been cut, the additional funding, because Public Works is able to change the shifts that they're running. And do the street sweeping without that additional dollars to support. So it was changing how operations run so that the extra money wasn't required. Thirty thousand was allocated to community gardens, twenty thousand to beautification. Council travel, twenty thousand was allocated to go to the meetings in Winnipeg. Fifteen thousand was allocated for hosting. Ten thousand for the AMM Northern District meetings, which were just held today. That's the maximum. And indoor recreation budget of fifteen thousand was added. The council has added ten thousand dollars to an indigenous reconciliation fund. So if you see the expenses add up to the projected revenues of fifty five point nine million roughly. Fiscal services is that fifty two percent, that looks huge. What do we mean by fiscal services? That's where all the big projects are located. So that's where all the capital, the road work, the pool, all that is under fiscal services. Protective services is twenty percent of the expenses, transportation services eight. Transfers from the reserve, seven, recreation and culture, five, general government, five. Environmental health services, three, and then the other categories such as economic development, public health are all one or less than one. How is that by category? The city's expenses overall, salaries and wages at forty six percent. The RCMP contract is twenty two percent. Deventure payment, which are the loans that the city has, five percent. Hydro propane and phones, five percent, goods, five percent, services we purchase from others, four percent. Equipment costs, three percent. Grants to controlled entities or outside agencies, three percent. Allowances for doubtful, two percent. Insurance costs, two percent, legislatively required costs under various acts is one percent. Repairs and maintenance, one percent, transit, one percent, and travel and training, one percent. So what are the debentures of the loans that the city currently has? There's a number that are up on the screen. The first one will tell you the original balance. The principal that's still remaining to be paid, how much the city pays every year and the interest rate that that loan was booked at. Then it titles in the final column, what year those debentures are coming off the books. The first one is for a debenture that was taken in the past for UCN Drive. The second one is the Gordon Beard parking lot, though the funding from that comes from the Nickel Days Committee. So the city holds the debt, but the Nickel Days Committee pays for it every year. The Thompson Regional Community Center, a number of recreation projects that I'll get into detail later. And then another part of UCN Drive and itself. So the remaining principal you could see is about four point one million. And you'll see that a number are being paid off this year, twenty twenty three, and the larger ones come off the books in twenty twenty seven. Currently, the city has an available borrowing limit of thirty one million dollars. Previous councils have reserved, are planned to reserve a debenture room of twelve point one million. To help pay the city's portion for the new wastewater treatment plant. Through council's budgeting processes and other allocations, they've reduced the amount that has to be borrowed down to five point eight million dollars towards that project. So a significant reduction of what was previously thought would have to be borrowed. The, as I mentioned earlier, the new aquatic facility, the pool will require right now a debenture of nine point two million. To fund the city's portion, which we expect to reduce over time through fundraising efforts. And at the time that that debenture is required, the debenture is taken when the project's finished. We anticipate that the TRCC debenture will be coming off the books and there'll be even more borrowing room available. Contributions to controlled entities, these are groups within the city that receive grants or payments from the city to help their operations. The Thompson Public Library, you can see last year on the right, this year in the middle. The Thompson Public Library is receiving the same as last year, two hundred thousand. Zoological Society, which is known as the boreal discovery center, twenty thousand. The Thompson Recycling Center, two hundred thousand. And a new entity, the Thompson Community Development Corporation, two hundred and twenty six thousand five hundred. Outside entities that also receive contributions from the city, the museum, sixty thousand. The Thompson Homeless Shelter, twenty thousand, the Curling Club's insurance, nine thousand. And the Humane Society's contract at thirty one thousand. Capital funding, so you can see the breakdown and where our capital's coming from, forty four percent of our capital is in from grants. Which is quite large for a city of our size, which is good news. The ventures are twenty seven percent, valets contribution that's six percent. Landfill money from five percent, the infrastructure reserve, five percent. Our aquatic reserve, four percent, the equipment reserve, three percent, public safety reserve, two percent. Building reserve, two percent, the nominal surplus, one percent, and then the general reserve and the gas tax, less than one percent. The capital projects that are currently ongoing and planned for twenty twenty two, the aquatic facility at twenty four point seven million. To be funded through grants, reserves and debentures. The road project for this year, five million, grants, tax and reserves. Juniper Park, six hundred thousand, grants, revenues and reserves. City Hall's coal, culverts, two hundred thousand, infrastructure reserve. Landfill fencing, a number of people might have noticed that hydro through the right away knocked down all the trees, it's very unsightly. And our license now requires us to put up a fence from the province. So because the fence is going to be huge, council's allocated two hundred thousand dollars for that fence. From the landfill reserve. RCMP fire panels are obsolete. They require a hundred and fifty thousand from the infrastructure and public safety reserves. Our asset management software called Lucity, a hundred and twenty five thousand to be paid from a valet revenue, which was a grant announced earlier in the year. And the life of landfill study, a hundred thousand dollars from the landfill reserve. A few more projects, a replacement of several traffic lights around the city, seventy thousand from infrastructure. A new landfill truck, sixty thousand landfill reserve. A study of the Gordon Beard Arena floor, fifty thousand from the gas tax. Gate, a new gator for the recreation and public works departments to do outdoor work in the summers, forty thousand infrastructure reserve. An assessment of the RCMP's building envelope and the library's fire panel, fifty five thousand dollars from reserve. The Thompson Regional Community Center water heaters, twenty eight and a half thousand building reserve. And completion of ongoing capital projects that are in the middle of works, there's a carry of four point eight million through reserves and grants. Now we're gonna jump into the utility. Most people don't realize that the city's operating capital is separate from the utility. The utility is the water, the sewer, there's slightly separate budgets. So under the utility, the city had applied to the public utilities board for twenty twenty one rates. And the twenty twenty rates have remained in effect until June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, per the recent public utility board order. The new rates are approved effective July first, twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two water rates were set at three point four two dollars per cubic meter and sewer rates are set at one point five one dollars per cubic meter. The twenty twenty flat fee was set at ninety two dollars, seven six cents, which included fourteen cubes of water. For twenty twenty two, the rates effective July first are three dollars and eighty one cents per cubic meter of water and one point seven nine for wastewater. The flat fee is a hundred dollars and sixty cents. The rates have increased because the city has now taken ownership of the new wastewater plant. Which has additional hydro, labor, chemicals to operate the plant. And just like the city's municipal operating budget, the utility budget has to be a balanced budget where revenues have to match the expenses. For this year's utility capital, that will be done through the utility rates. It includes the water and sewer renewals through the investing in Canada infrastructure funding. The city's portion will be funded through the utility rates that are charged. The wastewater treatment plant decommissioning and finalization, so the old wastewater plant has to be decommissioned per the city's license. And in order of, in order to meet our license requirements through the province. Work to be putting in a generator at the water treatment plant, currently has no backup power, that's how we got it from valet. And to do some work on several valves. A rate study to be provided to the public utility board in the future and a utility service vehicle. Also work to be done for a recreation trailer dump site for RVs to be able to dump wastewater. And updated fees for the meter reading software, so we have to pay the company its fee to use the software. So for the water main renewal work that's done this summer, like I said, we had the forty million for the roads. We have forty eight million that was approved in twenty nine, or approved in twenty twenty one, that's going to be going over the next seven years towards water and sewer renewals. The city's portion of that will be twelve point eight million over the seven-year project, so it's about one point eight million dollars per year that's collected through the utility. For every dollar spent, we're effectively getting three dollars from the other two levels of government. Twenty twenty year will be the first year of construction under this project with Deerwood Drive and Juniper Drive being completed. So we're gonna jump now into a mill rate comparison. We talked about the mill rate, that's what you think of what's my tax bill. So overall, the city's overall assessment, when they look at all the property in the city, the value is reduced by point four one percent for the city. The reason being when the, when the province donated the three Polaris buildings to the city that came off the books. As we no longer get taxes for them, so that pushed the assessment down by point four percent. Twenty twenty two is not a reassessment year. For the breakdown of the property values in the city, commercial properties make up about twenty seven percent of the properties. Residential properties or homes, sixty seven percent, and institutional properties make up six percent. So the residential mill rate comparison, you can see the twenty twenty two mill rates, the previous years in twenty twenty one. And what the difference is, and this is the breakdown that makes up a municipal tax bill. So you can see the provincial education support levy, zero last year, zero this year, there's no difference. For the school district of Mystery Lake, you can see a slight increase in their mill rate, a point four percent. For the city of Thompson's mill rate, it's exactly the same as last year, which means no, no increase from the city. Overall, though, when you add those numbers up, it means that the residential homeowner is going to see a zero point two percent increase to the mill rate. Because of that number change for the school district of Mystery Lake. On the commercial side, same tables before, the provincial education support levy, there's actually a reduction of one percent. The school district of Mystery Lake levy, as you can see again, is up by point four percent. The city of Thompson levy is identical to last year, so zero percent increase. Which, when you add those numbers up for commercial properties, there's an actual zero point zero one percent decrease. So now we're taking a model of an average home and applying the taxes, so you can see what the impact is. So if an average home is set in the city of Thompson by the province is a hundred and seventy four thousand two hundred and eighty. You can see last year, this year, what it basically means is because of that zero, you can see the zero for the assessments, zero for the city of Thompson. Seven dollars because of the school district of Mystery Lake, the overall impact on that homeowner's tax bill would be an increase of seven dollars. Which the city collects and then gives to the school district of Mystery Lake. On the flip side, if you're to look at a commercial property valued at a million dollars by the province. They will see about a seven dollar decrease to their commercial tax bill on that million dollar property. And again, you can see the zeros and then the slight increase by the school district of Mystery Lake and the reduction from the problems. The special levy, this is the levy that's passed by bylaw, it's in place for five years. If someone has a water sewer break on their property, but it's addressed by the city, so that's for water, storm and sewer. The twenty twenty two thou- or twenty twenty two amount is two hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and thirty four. Which means it breaks down to about eighty three dollars and seventy five cents per resident. The twenty twenty one amount was less, it was sixty two dollars and sixty one cents. So the question we've been getting is why the increase? During COVID, there was one summer where very few lawn repairs were done. Last year, the public works department accelerated lawn repairs, which drove up some of the costs in that area. The levies calculated based on the previous year's expenses, so as additional work was done last year. That means that that number has to be used for this year's bill, and that's why you're seeing an increase this year. So if you were to take, if you had to pay a bill to the city, an average bill, and it was two thousand and fifty one dollars in property taxes. This is what you're buying for that two thousand and fifty one dollars. So general government, two hundred and twenty four dollars. Protective services, eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. Transportation services, four hundred and twenty seven dollars. Environmental health services, thirty three dollars. Public health and welfare, twenty three dollars. Environmental development, one dollar. Economic development, twenty four dollars. Recreation, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Capital projects, sixty six dollars, and our debenture loan payments, a hundred and thirty seven dollars. So what is general government? That two hundred and forty, two hundred and twenty four dollars pays for council and its expenditures. It pays for all the administrative functions of the city, including my offices, the finance department, the human resources department. All the information technology fees, purchasing, all the legal fees and all the communications. It pays for the insurance on all the city buildings and properties. It pays for the assessment services that we have to pay to the province and it pays for the city's election costs. For eight hundred and seventy nine dollars of your bill, you're paying for protective services. Six hundred and eighty six of that goes to the RCMP, which includes thirty eight members, officers and their support staff. That doesn't include the rural component, that's just the Thompson. Pays a hundred and ten dollars toward the fire and ambulance service, which is twenty four members, officers and support staff. And. Is that eighty three thousand? I can't see the full number there. Eighty three? Eighty three dollars would go towards the four community safety officers, the bylaw officers, the animal control officer and the building inspectors. Water transportation services, four hundred and twenty seven dollars, which you're effectively buying is snow removal on streets and sidewalks. The repairs of streets, paving and patching, street cleaning, sidewalk and curb repair and street lighting. Environmental health services. For thirty three dollars, you're paying for your garbage collection, the recycling program, the community cleanup program. The removal of waste and community garbage bins and recycling bins and for the operation of land. For twenty three dollars of public health and welfare, you're paying for the cemetery's care and maintenance. And you're paying for the bill that we have to pay to the province for social assistance payments. Economic development at twenty four dollars, you're paying for the development services department, the overseas city land, and you're paying for the economic development activities. For recreation cultural services, you're paying twenty, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. That pays for the TRCC, which includes the CNESB arena, the Gordon Beard, the Kamaski Wellness Center and the walking track. It also pays for three outdoor rinks and two splash pads, all the tennis courts, skate parks, area parks and the dog park. The ball diamonds, soccer fields, the Millennium Trail, the brushing program, as well as the city's contributions to the public library and the boreal discovery center. For the capital projects at sixty six dollars, you're paying the city's matches for the investing in Canada infrastructure program projects. That's the road renewal, sewer renewal and the pool and the, as I said, the aquatic facility. For debentures, those are the loans that we currently have, a hundred and thirty seven dollars goes towards the TRCC payments. For the park projects that were done in the past, which include the skate park, cliff park and the clean park. And for the UCN drive paving and construction paving. And that concludes the presentation. It's now open to the floor. If there's any questions from the, from the room, that we'll try to address and answer your questions. I believe you're required to stand up, state your name, your address and then. And then yes, you have to state if you're in favor of the budget or if. And then, yes, you have to state if you're in favor of the budget or if you're opposed to the budget that I've just presented for council.
I'll start by saying, wrong amount of check, by the way, twenty Ash Street, I'll start by saying I am opposed. There are a few things that are questionable in there. Uh, first thing. Minor, but uh, community garden, this was tried before in Thompson and it was abandoned. What are we gonna do differently this time that's gonna make it last?
This time, there's uh several community agencies that approve, approach the city looking to do community gardening. So that's one avenue that can be used, or the city can prepare gardens themselves. One of the reasons that council looked at doing the community gardens again, regardless of what happened in the past, was. The Community Wellness and Public Safety Advisory Committee and the survey that was done of the committee, this was shown as something that the community was interested in doing. So council decided this year to allocate dollars, see if we can make this happen and see what the results.
Thank you. Next, uh. Water treatment plant generator, is that generator just? To provide lighting, if there's a power outage, or will it actually power the whole plant?
The plan for the generator is to power the whole plant. So currently, the way it works at the water treatment plant, if there's a power outage, there's diesel pumps that kick in. So distribution continues, but it draws the water down in the reserves. Um, the plant can't make any water while the power's out. So the plan for the generator is to power the entire plant, so that water can be continued to may, be made. So that we don't get into a situation where we emptied our reserves or our reservoirs, and there's no more water to pump. So that's where council wants to go is to provide more safety at that water treatment plant.
Okay, and the diesel generators, they will stay?
The diesel pumps, yes, they will stay.
A lot of money is getting spent on uh paving. I have a building on Night Crescent, I built it fourteen years ago, I still do not have pave pavement. I still do not have street lighting. Will I ever see it?
That's a good question. I'm gonna have to check and see if Night Crescent, it's not on this year's financial plan. I'll have to check and see if it's on the next five years um plan for the investing in Canada infrastructure program. I don't have an answer for you, James, I'm sorry.
Okay, next. The SEDC, uh. Correct me if I'm wrong, it looks very much like what we once had is Thompson Unlimited. When I was on council and we uh pulled the money out of that one. And then twenty twenty, I guess the calendar dictated that that one was over. What's different about this one from most of them? Because I didn't see any results, neither of those.
This one's getting a a a business plan put together that'll be presented by the community. Um, it has a different focus than the previous ones did. This one, the business plan is intended that it becomes more self-sufficient, requires funding for the first few years to get up and running. But the plan that they're supposed to present is to see how they can become financially independent and reduce the amount of money that they have to receive through grants from council. The amount was two hundred and twenty five thousand, I believe. Okay, two hundred and twenty six thousand roughly. And um the annual general meeting of the Thompson CDC is, I believe. June twenty eighth, that noon, um, at the TRCC, I believe. That's open to the public.
Okay, uh, next, the uh aquatic center. First of all, we never did have the public consultation, it was supposed to be happening, but by the uh. Last day of March, I believe it was, and apparently it's become somewhat a moot point. Since the funding was put in place, and I guess that's what we were waiting for to move on, but needless to say. We still never had a public consultation on that. Uh, you say it was, it's gonna be twenty four point seven million for this aquatic center, center, is that correct?
That's the class B estimate from StanTech.
Okay, and you also said, I believe, that they are working on the design.
Yes, the design's at the sixty six percent stage, um, and we're anticipating delivery of ninety nine percent drawings this month.
So we threw a number at them, and they're gonna try to design something that fits the number?
No, the number is being generated from them. What's, wh- what was asked by the community and and from council to be put in the building, that was dictating the number.
Okay, so it's a solid number at this point?
The numbers can fluctuate, so as you know, there's a supply chain issue globally, and as well as the war in Ukraine, the effects on the steel prices and whatnot. There will be fluctuation, we can't foresee what that will be. But um we've been indicated by the engineering companies, as well as the cost estimators, that there will be volatility over the next few years.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for any questions? Comments?
Adam Warren, one way entail. Uh, I'd say right now I'm opposed to the budget, um, have a few questions. Regarding the aquatic center, I keep, I I've been hearing StanTech for quite a while, has there been any? Secondary estimates or other companies or StanTech, the only company that builds aquatic centers in Manitoba?
The way it worked is council tendered the project. I believe there were ten companies came back with offers of between eight to ten, I can't quite remember. Uh, sorry, to a request for proposals. Um, and StanTech is the one that was awarded the proposal, so they're the only project that's working on it, uh, because that's who council hired to do the work for. Okay, so um, and and sorry, further to that, I think what you're trying to get at is um. StanTech hires a third, a third-party cost estimator, so they provide their drawings. And then the estimator provides a cost back to StanTech of what they think that project would cost.
Right, so my concern would be, uh, not that StanTech was the job, but I know strangers in construction. And involved in my whole life. Rarely everything, anything runs on budget, and my concern is. Obviously, the volatile market, but as well as increased costs, cost plus jobs, modifications along the way. And inflation, so. I'm having a hard time seeing a twenty four million dollar. When it's probably, I mean, most buildings this size, and in this type of area, they usually go over budget by thirty percent. So I'm just curious if we have a plan for when it does go over budget.
So the way it works is um council puts the number in, that's the estimate in the, in the financial plan, but it does still have to go to tender. So once it's tendered and the actual cost comes in, council then has to decide if they accept that cost. But right now, this is in the plan because that's the number that we've been given. So they have to build it into the financial plans, but it's there. If it's not in the financial plan, they can't do anything about a pool this year. So they build the cost in now, then it has to go to tender where everyone could bid on what they think would cost to build it. And the council can say, yes, we're willing to take one of those, or no, we're back to the drawing.
So uh I saw on the budget, it's what, forty two percent goes towards city of Thompson operating costs, like wages and salaries, is that right?
I don't have the exact percentage in front of me there.
I thought I saw forty percent right here. But anyways, um, obviously takes up a large portion of the budget, and I'm wondering, I I haven't heard much about investing in. The current employees, uh, and where I'm going with this is, um. Is there any outstanding employees that would be beneficial to send away for specialty training, whether it be concrete or some sort of maintenance or? Because I think it's a pretty common complaint or whatever, that we're not getting enough doll, like, money for, or work for adult, right? Um, so is there any way to?
But yeah, that's.
Equipped our, our people so that we get a better, better outcome too, because I've seen some new freshly port sidewalks too, and. I mean, uh. Yeah.
Yep, there's um something we've been trying to do, is trying to work with UCN to have programs developed. To assist the training some of our employees, but that's definitely something we could take back as an administrative team, discuss on alternate models for training and style. So a lot of training in the past has been done internally, but um.
Why would you rely on UCN, like, I I'm not understanding that concept, because that's a carpenter my entire adulthood. We get shipped south for three week grass, crash courses all the time, whether it's fall or asking concrete or staircases or whatever, like. The, the ability to get the training is there. Um, or are you just looking for the cheapest option?
No, no, we're trying to look for whatever, whatever the need is in the departments. To have the programs developed so that, or if they're already there, send people to those programs, so we do use UCN, if that's available in an area that we need.
So if the funding goes through and we're talking about starting construction and was it twenty twenty?
Which projects?
The water center?
Um, yeah, but still have to be tendered to see if it was awarded this year or not.
Like, is there any uh plans in place as of yet, or is it too early to understand, like, who's gonna um? Occupy the positions within the aquatic center, who's gonna help maintain this massive facilities, we couldn't maintain the last one. That would be your special trade employees for. For this?
We've identified all that as needs, that would come later as the facility's being built. So the architects would identify what the needs were for the staffing, and then that would be worked through with the city. So, you know, we don't have that right now, but um as part of the Lucidity Asset Management software that we're also starting to set up. The maintenance of that would be put into the software, and then you get your reminders telling you when you have to do what. Um, per the manuals of that, the manufac- or the builders would give you. So when they build the facility, they're gonna have manuals for every single piece of equipment, that's all entered into the computer systems. It'll start to create schedules to tell us how to maintain that and how often.
Okay, uh, and my last question is about the, the six hundred thousand for the Juniper Park, I'm just curious, that's tunes, they're like a. Strategy into just redoing one park and moving on to the next one, because there's so many like tot lots and mini parks around, like. I could see six hundred thousand stretching way further in. Upkeeping or maintaining some of the ones that are falling apart, like they're smaller, but so many children use them, I have five children myself, so. I know they go to these small parks and they have all kinds of kids around, and I know there's one. There's one in each of the trailer course, there's two on Westwood Drive, like, there's all these tot lots that are falling apart. Um, where six hundred thousand probably bring them all up to some form of a staff or.
Right, the city has a master parks plan that was developed, it's on the city's website. Um, it has an overview of a number of the different parks, saying what could be done to improve those parks or changes that can be made to modernize them. The reason the city targeted Juniper Park is because the outdoor waiting pools uh require staffing for lifeguards. Um, they need a lot of maintenance now because they're so decrepit, so council targeted that park as a priority.
Further questions?
I have one more question, uh, came to something you just mentioned. Uh, this new aquatic center, if built, would come with manuals on uh how to uh. Do the upkeep on this building, did the Norplex pool not come with the manuals?
Uh, the Norplex pool was built in the seventies, a number of those manuals were no longer available. So wh- when I came into the city, I didn't see a number of those manuals.
So they lost the manuals?
I can't speak to what happened since the seventies. I don't think I was born when that building, building was built.
I was, and I paid for the last one. I've done my share.
Uh, we have got a comment uh from the screen. Um, Sandra Orbiterfer, sixty eight Partridge person. I'm in favor of the twenty twenty two budget as a taxpayer and a young family. I'm very happy to see the city of Thompson supporting a new aquatic facility in our community. It is a well thought out budget and a sound plan for now financing a future aquatic facility.
Yeah, uh, John Rutledge, I'm very pleased and proud of him. Uh, I support the budget, I, I found it very informative, um. And I supported the, like, having the, you know, aquatic center in the budget, I think that's a huge need in this community. And it services people from eight to eight months and uh covers so many uh. Health in this cloud, mental health union, that is it, and I think it's money well spent.
Thank you. Any other further comments, questions?
I don't know if I'm in favor or against you. But I just have a couple of questions, will you state your name for the? With some of the traffic lights, um, are you guys going through MPI to replace the damage lights, and it is a big population?
The lights that are being replaced are already covered for those ones. What this is, is other lights that are around town that look too rusty, or they're unstable, that's what those pumps are for.
And with the zero dollar balance, for this, for a bunch of being balanced at zero dollars, what does that mean for next year? We're taking the two hundred and forty, though, now that there is your one.
Budgets are done year by year, so we'll have to see what comes of next year. Um, obviously, there's uh reports right now of inflationary costs, so council has to, to deal with the budget as the years come. So you can't really predict how the year's gonna play out. Go ahead.
Then you consider just a little bit of an increase so that we know that twice, twice as hard next year, just a comment, just a question. Uh, pay a little bit this more this year than.
Budgets determined by councils as a whole, so it's uh, what I presented is currently the council's will to present.
Two thousand and eighteen, the trail port had, um. Drainage repairs done? Uh, where are they standing and how far do you think in the process future that the brand of trail port will be paved?
That would be council's decision. In terms of the drainage issues, one of the projects actually couldn't be completed. Because an underground stream was discovered underneath, the ground is too unstable underneath that area to put the piping in. Which is why there's one area that still has to have surface drainage, and speaking about the roads, that's a council decision. That's not in this year's budget.
So um, the money that was spent towards paving for the trail port has been allocated to the green?
Uh, no, the money that was allocated in the past would have been specifically for that project. We're not currently carrying, carrying any money for paving in the burnt wood curling or the burnt wood um trailer curd.
And how much money has been spent up to date on road repairs?
Since when?
Last year, since this year. Like, how much money is left to be spent from last year? Is there any?
I don't think, but budget's done year by year, right? So if there's any money left at the end of the year, it goes towards the normal surplus. So the, the budgets are done year by year. There is money this year for capital, but in terms of if you're talking operating, that's separate. It's the capitals where we're building something as a project. So there is money towards that this year, like I said, there's a five million dollar project plan for this year. Um, and then the city shared that, um, I presented the number there.
And with the pool, the need for the pool. Uh, and we need the nine point seven, what ideas does council have for fundraising, help fundraising those ideas? Above the grants, is there any, is there any plan for the city to say, hey, we're gonna hold a. Social in the TRCC for nickel, like you do for nickel days and money allocated.
Yeah, there's a number of those aren't even planned, so there is a community fundraising committee. They're planning a number of fundraising activities themselves, that's open to anyone in the public, so if there's an interest of joining that committee. We can put the names of those people out there for that fundraising, the city's also in discussions with a number of families where um. We're expecting some estates to be donated to the city towards this project. Um, and then council can determine how they're allocating dollars internally for that as well. The city's also gonna continue pursuing other grants um to try to fund that shortfall. Or difference sizes.
Okay, thank you.
I just one more question, how much was fundraised in the last four months to the fundraising efforts?
I don't have that number in front of me. A hundred thousands in the trust, okay.
That'll be, since it began, or that's the last four months?
Like Glenn Ringrose, one six seven Riverside Drive. I just want to thank them for having a focus on the pool, like piggybacking of the message that was sent in, Senator, was it? Um, it's really important to me, my family, and I know some other families and kids that uh. The, you know, like, my, my little Sadia was her only activity. And it's dearly missed for, for over two years. And to be quite honest, I've been teetering, you know, whether even want to stay because of that fact, because it's her passion. So I hope it's not false hope, I hope it's realistic, what we're doing and, and what we're planning. Because what I'm hearing from other business people in the community is the need to attract people to Thompson. I, we, we, we just have to have a, a, a culture that exists in the community that. Makes families feel welcome and comfortable. And in a, in an environment that has that, that culture, but that focuses on activities, not. No offense, but liquor commissions, first thing we see when we drive into the community, I'd rather see. Uh, you know, a, a park or something nice, not a hell seat. It's the first thing you see when you drive in, it's the last thing you see when you leave. And all of the common denominators that surround, and it's terrible. It's, it is, it's depressing. And I feel for all those folks and everything else, but we just, we need to do something to. And I feel for all those folks and everything else, but we just, we need to do something to attract people to stay in Thompson. How many professional positions, they can't fill, valid, high-paying jobs? Because people won't come here, they won't stay. That pool's a big thing. Huge. Because kids like to swim. TNT was a great swimming organization that, I know, so other parents had their kids in. We were traveling to seven different venues, eight different venues with the team every year for the first year she was in, and now that's different. So I just, I thank you for having it there, I just hope it's realistic and there's some some horsepower in behind. Fair enough. Secondly, uh, regarding the street initiative, I didn't see anything about the details of your plans, so I I make there, I don't know, was there any plans in there to fixing Riverside Drive?
Riverside Drive is part of the five-year plan. So that's, that's in there. Um, I think there was planning to do some of that this year, but that might have been bumped to next year. I just have to check, because um, the engineers did a bit of an assessment, and there's parts of it have deteriorated so much, it requires additional work, but it is part of the plan.
Sorry, because the work that was done there has left such a debris, you can't clean. It was, this, this, the street sweepers coming so early, and all the noise, it's great. But it's because of all the gravel that was left there from the construction. It leaves unsafe areas for kids and whatnot to be cycling up and down the road. And the street is so narrow to begin with, much more so than any other street, I swear. I would, I would actually be able to prove that, but I'm not gonna bother, I just, it'd be nice to see. I've been there for, since two thousand and two, and I don't recall it being done in all that time.
So the plan for the capital projects is um, to do the water on the street first?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
That's, that's the strategy.
Thank you very much.
And if I could ask one question, Ms. Cutler, um, you didn't indicate if you were for or against that you spoke?
I'm in for the budget.
For?
Thank you. Any other further comments?
Ten.
I mean, I just need to know if uh, Mr. Ringrose and Ben are opposed to that.
Sure.
I, I didn't see it all, but I guess I'll, I'll give way.
Thank you.
Just to add something to what Mr. Ring said, I agree totally that uh Thompson should have a pool, we should have had one all along. I had a grandson born in two thousand and eighteen, he was more three months old, maybe four months old, when you people shut it down. He hasn't been able to enjoy one yet, so I'd like to see him be able to enjoy one too. But maybe that uh, public consultation should be held, and we can have one be in case it does not work.
Thank you.
For the uh, for the Aquatic Center build, I never noticed, is there decommissioning of the pool in that cost?
That is not included in the costs, um, as council can still explore uses for that building. Um, so we've had a number of meetings with agencies and groups around the community, they've expressed interest in that building. Um, but we'd have to take those plans further along and see what council's decision is for that building.
And is uh, I make here, this is totally unusable for a pool at this point?
There is major issues for its use as a pool, though it could be repurposed for other uses. So there's issues with foundational issues, issues with the structure that holds the pool deck. And the, the, the pool, the water area, I guess you could say, but there's a, it allows it to be used for other purposes.
So I probably heard that there was a estimate to retrofit you. So I've heard of an estimate made, if there was all these issues.
So the KGS group was hired by the city, I believe, back in twenty nineteen. Um, and did a study of retrofitting versus building new. Uh, provided that to council, and council directed the city to pursue grants for new. But those are previous year's budgets.
Anything further?
One more question. Uh, Norplex Pool, is there money in this financial plan going towards the old Norplex?
I believe there's money towards basic electricity costs for the security system. Um, I think that's virtually it. Um, and we're discussions with Manitoba Hydro, we'll potentially discontinue that service, um, so yes.
Okay, secondly, who made the decision to shut down the heat in the winter time?
There never was heat, that was the issue. So there was no decision made to shut down the heat, the building's heat had been non-functional for multiple years. The building was being heated by the hot water in the, in the pool itself, which created the humidity issues throughout the building and caused the rusting. So once the water was drained, there was no heat source left, so the, 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 the heating system had been gone for years.
Could they not have isolated the problem, problem panels, and kept the heat on, because we all know the, the frost, the cold is gonna harm the building?
That panel was done during, I believe, the previous council, and there was no investments made since then to upgrade those paths. So those are all council decisions on, on what's upgraded or what's not.
When the old, last council was uh, in place here, it was a running pool operation. So it was after that, that term was over.
Uh, the pool was operating, but the heating system was not. The heating was through the, the humidity and the hot water, heating the rest of the, the building.
It's obvious why that place failed.
Okay, I have just one last question about pool, um, because I couldn't agree more with, with, with your, your, about the the need, like, I, my kids don't know how to swim, and my oldest is nine. And it's a lifesaving thing, especially where we did. I I think my, my biggest issue, like, I get, I was told there was gonna be some sort of, yeah, forum or something that they're talking about to public discussion, I never did that happen. Like, no, yes?
Council, when the pool was originally closed, have a public forum, I don't believe there's been a, oh, no, there is a a small meeting in November, which I was not here for, and I don't believe there's been a forum since.
Okay, I'm just interested, um, but who did, who decides on the location of? I think that's a, like, that's a big concern for many, I don't know if it has much to do with the budget, but kind of, because it affects the budget depending on where you place it.
The determination of the location was decided in uh, council and consultation with the architects and engineers. So a number of locations were put forward, architects and engineers made recommendations of where that should be, and they conducted geotechnical work uh, to see if the location was suitable or not. And then council would make its decision what we go. So currently, the decision is for it to go in the field next to the TRCs.
And is there not, like, I, I, I don't know if this stupid question or not, but is there enough room? Like, if you guys take up that whole pool, field of the pool, like, what about parking and events and?
The pool itself, as well as a new parking lot, that would go with it, only takes about a third of the field.
Okay. Pool look bigger on the picture, it's a small pool.
I find the need to stand again. Uh, I've been watching and waiting for a uh, public consultation. And let me ensure Mr. Morton that no, there was not anything held in November for the public. I would have thought that.
I just wanted to add, um my personal experience growing up and being raised in so many different communities throughout Manitoba, because of my dad's occupation as a banker, we moved every three years to a new community. And I saw so many different communities, and now they work. And hockey, I was a hockey player, I was, I, I played hockey, and it brought people together. Here, you got a hockey rink, and you get two of them, it brings people together. I was never a swimmer. Uh, all the sports I ever played, I, I kind of left it up to Sadie what she wanted to do, and she chose swimming. And so I got involved, uh, because we're going to, because that's, she's my kid. I was, my eyes were opened as to how much that sport brings people together and families together. Because the activities that the TNT swim team produced brought not only people in from out of town, but all the parents that, you know, congregated around supporting the team. And the parents would get involved, the guys out there holding the stopwatch, along with Jeff and other parents, and I've never done this stuff, or here I am, timing kids and getting involved. And, and so what I saw was so much heart involved in that team. And, and the sport of swimming, and to see it gone, it's, it's terrible. And, and that is gonna decide whether a person lives here and be a tax contributor to your, you know, uh, to, to the economy and and everything, I mean, it's, it's, until you're actually involved in these processes, you don't really realize it, you can be blind to it. When you're involved in it and see it, and then it's gone. It's terrible. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, uh, definitely, uh, good comments from uh, everybody, I appreciate it. It is H P M Monday, and will be council's turn to uh, do their debating and, and voting. And so please uh, tune in or come to the city call to hear the debate. And uh, thank you for tonight, and uh, I appreciate everybody being here. Okay.
The call for.
So call for here. Great. And you may, all in favor?
The first time I saw it was when we, yeah, I'm only. So we'll pay for a breakfast tomorrow.